Happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the August 13th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in our process. Pam, roll call please.
Is it Belford?
Present.
Is it Belford?
Present.
Are those things driving us crazy?
Oh, it's those.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present. Sorry, guys.
Present.
And Miss Campbell?
Present.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite you to join us. Thank you. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have with us the Coco High Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Misty Martinez, here to perform for us. This choir has the distinct honor of being invited to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York on October 12th through the 15th. First, however, I would like to ask 12th grade student Louis Merced lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by 9th grade student Patrick Miller, who will provide us with some closing thoughts. I ask that both young men remain at the podium so we can find out a little more about them. Mr. Merced?
Good evening. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Miller?
Hi, I'm Patrick Miller. I'm a freshman and this is my third year with the Coco High Chorus. I'm also a two-year All-State Chorus student. Back in January, we were invited to sing at the world-renowned Carnegie Hall for the National Fall Sing. And all summer, we've been working tirelessly to gain the money we need to go on this once-in-a-lifetime trip. And we just want to thank you all for having us here this evening.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions for you guys. We'd just like to quiz you guys a little bit, to find a little bit more about you. First of all, do you have any parents here with you that you would want to introduce?
I do.
Nope, okay. What is your favorite thing about school, for each of you to answer?
My favorite thing about school is honestly just being part of this group because it just, it's always been a family for me. For the past few years, we've been through everything together and I just am so glad I've had the opportunity to be a part of this course.
That's wonderful.
I would honestly say the same thing, just this chorus and everything, honestly.
It's an extended family for you both. And I'm guessing the whole group feels that way?
Yeah.
Yeah? That's fantastic. They are going to sing in just another second. If you could change one thing about your school, I would like to hear from both of you what that would be. Just pretend it's you and I talking. Don't notice any of them back there.
Probably to an indoor campus.
Do you get rained on?
Yes.
And it's hot?
Yes. A lot.
Same for you?
Probably.
Do you have something else you'd like to change?
I just don't like all the drama.
All the drama? That's teenagers, sorry. You'll outgrow it. Well, I don't know. Actually, you get a lot of drama even in your professional life and career. So, good luck to you on that one. Mr. Susan has a question for you.
Are school members allowed to sing with them?
Oh, no. Nope.
No. Okay, I guess that's off. You ever need me to come at any of your events, I'm available. All right?
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Now, the Coco High Chorus will perform the National Anthem.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Yeah, shouldn't we stand? Should we be standing? And we ask all to please stand.
We're going to get to sing?
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? When the rocket's red glare, the wonks bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was wonderful. Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity to plug your fundraising goal status and where we can go to help support for those that may be watching from home or in the audience.
Okay, when we entered into our gala on Saturday night, we had a big event in the gala, and the group of ladies from Coco that had pledged to help us, their goal was $30,000, and they reached their goal. Now, of that, we had already received from that about 12 to 14. We were at $60,000, so we had raised about $48,000 going into it. So, with them making theirs, we are at, I believe, we haven't gotten the check yet, but I believe we're at about 70 to 74 right now. We have to have $85,000. So, we do have some other fundraisers going on. I feel like, I've been at peace from the beginning that this was going to happen with the community's support. But right now, sitting in our bank account is $60,000, but we have not received the check from Saturday. So, I will be more than happy to let you know on Saturday. We do still have a GoFundMe account that is up there, GoFundMe page. We're at about $14,300 on the GoFundMe. So, if they would like to send checks to Coco High School, that's probably the easiest way, and then we will then get the check to the foundation.
I was trying to follow your numbers. Is there a 12,000, even if the check comes in, is there still 10 to 12,000 that you need, or you have that coming in from the GoFundMe already?
No, the GoFundMe is all-inclusive. So, what we have made up to this point, sitting in our account is $60,000. I don't know exactly how much is left to come in from Saturday. They had hoped for $30,000, and she said they reached their goal, but 12 of that had already come in to us, so it's kind of a little confusing. So, I think we are at about $74,000.
And you need $85,000. That's what I was trying to get at. There's still a gap in there. I didn't want you to convey to everyone that you were already at your goal, because I didn't think you were quite there yet.
No, we're not quite there. We're really close.
So, you still need help and support?
Yes.
And people can go to a GoFundMe account? Where is that?
Yes, GoFundMe.com, and you just click on, put in Coco High School, and it comes up. It's Coco to Carnegie.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate you all coming out here.
Thank you.
Oh, oops, sorry, Dr. Mullins. Looks like you're supposed to address.
No, you got it covered.
I hadn't turned the page. Okay, at this time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. Campbell, would you like to start?
I was trying to see, I was trying to make sure I didn't take anybody else's, but... So, I'll leave the Brevard Schools Foundation to someone else. I'm going to get that. I was able to come to one of the days of the New Teacher Academy that happened on July 30th and 31st, I believe, and what a fun group of teachers we have brought into the district. And you know, one of the things that was really surprising to me, I was there on the second day, and on the second day, veteran teachers did not actually have to attend. Am I correcting that, Dr. Theddy? But I talked to so many teachers who said, "Oh, yeah, I've taught for 10 years in Puerto Rico," or "11 years in this other state," and "we're here from Kentucky." And so, I was so excited to see them come back, and they wanted to have that professional development, to meet some people from other schools. And so, it was a great group, and the team of Dr. Theddy's staff that did that training, they just did a fantastic job, and it was really exciting to see that energetic bunch of new teachers. The Adult Ed Summit was the next day, the first and the second, I believe, if I'm getting my dates right. And I got to go a little, just a little, you know, an hour or two of that, and they brought in a guest speaker, and I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but Mr. Arnett brought in, or not, brought in a guy to talk about work ethic and how we really need to work with our adult students, building in that training of not just the job skills, but the work ethic, because that is the number-one thing that employers are looking at, and that can be taught. And so, it's exciting to hear him, and he was lots of fun, too. Down at Turner Elementary last Saturday, no, excuse me, a week ago Saturday, a group of people from different churches and community, and as well as some of the staff members from Turner, and even some of our district administrators, were there on campus doing a beautification project through Love Brevard. And we painted hallways and pressure washed. I'm telling you, Robin Novelli is a mean pressure washer. If you ever want to see him at Skills, I have some video. But just making the camp beautiful, and Dr. Toll, the principal there, wanted just to make the campus just have a new, fresh face. And we're so thankful for the members of the community who coordinated that and provided the labor to make Turner just have that beautiful day. I thank all the teachers who presented on the Professional Development Day. I sat in on several sessions, and you guys just did a really fantastic job. Was excited to see things like health and wellness, and looking at the next generation, Gen Z stats, and just really making it relevant to our teachers. I'll let somebody else cover the Coco High School ribbon cutting. And yesterday, first day of school, thank you, guys. You rocked it. You had a great day. And I have to tell you, down in my end, we had some crazy mess going on. There was a storm right at dismissal and power outages, not power outages, excuse me, electric, excuse me, internet, telephone, air conditioning outages, thanks to AT&amp;T, or no thanks to AT&amp;T. But you know what? When I walked into those buildings, Dr. Mullins', students were engaged. They were learning. They weren't just sitting around languishing in the heat. They were on task. And I'm so thankful for our teachers, our administrators, who made the magic happen. Thank you, Russell Cheatham and Sue Han for managing craziness all day long. So, I'm just so thankful for a crazy but wonderful first day.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
Okay, first person, most important person in the room tonight, is I want to introduce my daughter, Olivia. Olivia, you've got to stand up, and she's trying to hide from us. Olivia? Anyways, this is usually what she does when I ask her to do anything at home. But I want to let you guys know, she is the strongest lobbyist in the entire district because she lobbies very hard for all of her issues, including sad computers, which I drive everybody crazy about, trying the renewal rate, the kindness club that she couldn't get into last year, but now she's in third grade, she can, and the grass cutting that avoids her to be able to run at PE. So, I did want to give my daughter, I love you, honey, thanks for coming tonight, and mom said you're staying the whole meeting, right? Isn't that what you said? Yeah. Okay, she's going to be here the whole meeting. Next thing is, is I ran into Mr. Chibian, and I want to tell you guys a funny story, and it kind of follows how I am. Last year, I was down at the warehouse, and I saw these instruments, you know, musical instruments, just sitting down there, and I said, "Hey." I said, "What are we doing with those instruments?" I mean, what are we, he goes, "Oh, we're just selling them off." And I said, "Well, how are we selling them off?" He goes, "Honestly, like, half of them end up going down to the dump because they can't be used, right? I mean, they're just destroyed." And I said, "No, we can't do that. There's got to be some that are there." I said, "Kyle, hold everything that you have, right?" So, he turns around and he creates this palette of instruments. So, every time we DCR'd something from a school, it would come in, Kyle would grab what looked like a usable instrument, a drum, a tuba, whatever that is, and he would make this big palette, right? And then it became two palettes, then it became three palettes, and then Kyle called me and he says, "Listen, Mr. Susan, we've got to get this thing out of here. This is out of control. What do you have going on it?" And I had already called Mr. Chibian and said, "Hey, you know, we've got some musical instruments for your program down there. I would love it if, you know, we could do that now." So, they delivered them. And I caught up to them, because this was last year, and I said, "Hey, how did it all go?" Because we just kind of went there and we didn't actually follow up and everything else. And he said, "Matt," he said, "we distributed tubas to Heritage, tubas to Bayside." He says, "I've got a French horn that's kind of beat up, but the kids at least know what it looks like, and I can play through it." And the one thing that really caught me was he said this, he said that, and he's sitting in the audience, he said, "There are kids that are using those instruments that never would have gotten those instruments before, and that was the purpose of doing it, and I wanted to say thanks for sticking your neck out to take them. There's some that are still left over that we've got to go back and get, right? But the bottom line is, is that you did that, and that meant a lot to me, and thank you for taking them, and all those musical programs down there benefited from it, so thanks a lot." I did want to also say that PD Day, man, what a day over there at Viera High School. It was awesome. And for those of you guys, I went to the elementary school one, that was 5 and 6 over at Rockledge, and Viera High School, which was all secondary. Now, if you ever looked at the, when I originally was a teacher and we had PD Day back in the day, it was on like one sheet of paper. You would go, and they would hoard us into rooms, and it was just one sheet. When I got there to Viera, I mean, I was looking at it, it was a book, and there were so many offerings and so many opportunities that you could go to, and Vanessa Skipper was doing one, we had a bunch of other, it was amazing. So, to give that many opportunities, a lot of congratulations goes out to Ms. Sullivan in the back, because I know that you put a lot of that stuff together, and you were the head of that, so thank you. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Don Weaver, who still, to this day, is still fighting for the Veterans Speaking Project. I know that we talked about that. He came in years ago, still number one in the Southeast United States, number two in the nation, and he's still plowing away. And those of you guys that don't know what he is, Don and I sat down and said, "We've got to get some veteran speakers into the classroom" years ago, and so, we sat down, and he brought 14 speakers to speak at all of the schools. Now, here's how that works. If you ask Don, "Hey, I've got a literary AP, you know, reading on World War II and Hiroshima," whatever that is, Don will find you an actual veteran and speak specific to that actual event. And then what that does is it enriches the actual learning that goes on, and it does an amazing job. As a former social studies teacher, I will tell you, we really, really struggled to try to find people that gave pertinent firsthand accounts of what happened. So, if you guys ever need that curriculum, it could be anything, call Don Weaver. Our staff, Kimberly Garten, has really, just really supported him. Give Kimberly a call through the Social Studies Project. She's here in the district, she'll be able to help you. I did want to give a shout-out to Space Coast Daily. They met with Viera High School, and they're putting together an internship/sponsorship program. They have multimedia programs. It's just going to be a great opportunity for a lot of those kids to move forward with one of our great career and technical programs in one of the high schools. I also want to give a shout-out to the Ladies at Just Serve. It's an organization that does a lot of volunteering. I met with them, and if you guys don't know who this is, this is an organization who we don't endorse. It's an outside organization, and they take, and they will, they have businesses that have signed up on this side for volunteer hours. You have to be a not-for-profit, and then the students can come over here and sign up to link up the volunteer programs that we need. And these aren't the, I don't know how many times people have been in part of, you've seen kids trying to do their Bright Futures Hours? Where are they at the majority of the time? They're filing files in the front office, they're doing all these other things. These are actual amazing opportunities that our kids can take advantage of, all the way from the sheriff's junior program that he has, all the way to a lot of thrift shops, all the way to, I mean, it's a ton of opportunities through Just Serve. Just wanted to guys, give a shout-out to the ladies there. And New Teacher Academy, you spoke about it on the second day? I'll tell you, I'm sorry, I'm just really excited today. I think I drank too much coffee. I'm not going to kid you. So, Teacher Academy, I was there on the first day, and I'll tell you this. For the first time, it's a thing that I try to do, I try to make it by there to speak to them every year. Being a former teacher, I loved it, but for the first time, I looked in the audience and I saw a student of mine from when I taught. And what was amazing is, is that the student that I taught was part of the original teaching academy that we formed at Space Coast High School. So, she was part of the inaugural team that actually came out, was a part of that process. She went, she went into the private industry, and now she's coming back. Her name's Coral Batchelder. She's going to be so embarrassed that I actually talked about it. She's up at Titusville High School. She's amazing. I think she's becoming a guidance counselor, not a teacher, but absolutely phenomenal, and the New Teacher Academy was really cool. Besides that, Coral was the highlight, because I thought that was really cool. And those teachers are bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, ready to go. I also wanted to say Ronald McDonald House is now officially going to sponsor our Viera High Health Program, so they're going to be working and giving internships and stuff, and I think Viera's going to raise money for a Ronald McDonald Room, because that's where the individual that had the heart condition last year ended up, and his family didn't have an opportunity to stay there, so they used that. And, I don't know, I have a lot more written down, but I know I'm running out of my time, and you guys are starting to like fall asleep, so I'm going to leave it alone. And I did want to say thank you for you guys for being here tonight. Really appreciate everything you guys are doing, and I'm so happy that my daughter ran out of the room to try to avoid me talking to her again. So, thanks a lot, and I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. It's been a busy couple of weeks, as you've seen from what has been shared already, so I will try not to double up and try to focus on those things where we weren't all there. Had the opportunity, Titusville has been very excited that Lockheed Martin opted to relocate their fleet ballistic missile facility headquarters from California to Titusville, and I was invited to attend the flag raising at the new facility, which was awesome, even more awesome than the fact that they have chosen to relocate to Titusville. When they were speaking about the new facility and about how excited they were to be on the Space Coast and in Titusville and partnering with all of us, they talked about a few of their biggest priorities, and guys, we made top five. They said, "One of our most important things as an organization is to make sure that we are partnering with schools, that we are supporting teachers, that we are supporting students, that we are providing opportunities for internships and apprenticeships and doing everything we can to make sure that we're growing our workforce of tomorrow." So, I know we talk about that a lot, but I was, I even had several people who are not in education that came up to me afterward and were like, "How did you make top five? We didn't make top five with our issue, but you made top five." So, that was really good. To the PD Day, I won't talk on it long, but I just want to say thank you so much. I can't tell you how important I think it is that people have the opportunity to choose what their learnings are, and that is exactly what occurred, and I'm very appreciative for that. Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity Friday to attend the back-to-school barbecue, and I got to tell you guys, he and I had a one-on-one schedule, and I said, "Hey, how about you come up to the north end instead of me coming down there, and we'll hit the back-to-school barbecue?" Well, I didn't really tell him that we were going to be out in 106th Heat Index, traveling to multiple locations throughout the north end of the county to see everyone. And so, he was in his suit and tie, he took his jacket off, but he was a trooper. We hit, and rolled up his sleeves, absolutely. We hit four different locations, so for those of you not familiar with back-to-school barbecue, it's something that takes place in the north end of the county. It's the astronaut feeder chain, and I'm going to call you guys that until you come up with a better name for me to call you it, even though I know the rest of you don't want to be called astronaut feeder chain. But it includes Astronaut High School, Madison Middle School, Southlake Elementary, Oak Park Elementary, Mims Elementary, and Pinewood Elementary. And they all partner, this is their second annual back-to-school barbecue. Children's Hunger Project in the morning, and then they go out to locations throughout town. This year, it was five different locations. They hand out free hot dogs, free snow cones, chips, and they also have the Children's Hunger Project packs to send home with the kids as well. And supported by faculty and staff from all of those schools, we had a great turnout of people out there supporting in the heat and doing a phenomenal job, and it was a great time, I think, had by all. So, many thanks to all of those that made that possible, and to Dr. Mullins for joining me as we traversed, you know, Mims to Titusville. I think he got to see some, when we pulled into Tractor Supply, I think he was a little bit nervous, but we made it through. Also, the Brevard Schools Foundation back-to-school giveaway, which I think all of us participated in, was a wonderful, wonderful event. We had so many organized events supporting our students this year, and it was just really phenomenal to see the community coming out to make sure that they have the supplies that they need, and also lots of special things done for our teachers and our staff members. So, I know it's already been mentioned, without saying so many thank-yous for the first day of school, our facility staff that worked and worked and worked all summer long to make sure that our facilities were ready for our students to return, Mr. Novelli, all of the work that you and all of the others did to make sure that the board was updated on progress on air conditioning, on all the projects that were taking place, Sue Han, who is always phenomenal, and Russell Cheatham, too. I know you all do a lot of work that doesn't keep you in the limelight, but we appreciate all of the work that you do immensely, down to all of those folks. I know I was out, as we were driving around on Friday, there were bus drivers running the routes to make sure that they were ready for students on Monday morning, and of course, all of the faculty and staff at the schools that really made it a great first day back for students. So, thank you all. I think we had a few minor glitches, but for the most part, I think it was a really great first day of school, and I look forward to a great 19, 20 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Ms. McDougal?
Thank you. I was lucky enough to, I want to thank David O'Brien, who, he and I spent a morning touring all the DJJ sites, which was eye-opening. I wanted to learn a little bit more about our sites there, and I want to say that I was very impressed with the AMI site, and what I had, I had a student there, give the, lead the tour, and he was going to graduate in August, and he's already enrolled in Tallahassee Community College up there. And what I saw when I was there, an amazing mural, which was put together with, well, with the help of Brevard's Cultural Alliance. And that group there at AMI works with, goes down to Heritage, and they do art projects with our students down there. So, it's an amazing program, very well-disciplined, very, I was impressed. So, if you haven't been to an AMI facility, it's pretty amazing what they do there for these children. I want to give a little shout-out, this may have already been done before, but Edgewood earned some honors in the Visual Arts Program in our state, and I want to make sure I get the teachers' names right. Let me see if I can find them. I should put it in... I should put on my glasses, I'm so sorry. The application was on six critical factors: leadership of highly qualified and effective art teachers, curriculum, facilities, equipment and scheduling and community connection and school culture. And so, our teachers, Marissa Flint is one of them and Crystal, Crystal, I hope I get your name right, Ingleton, thank you so much for going through this process, it's very rigorous and congratulations to the Edgewood School for that award. I also want to just give a shout out to Nada Francis, who, a couple of weeks ago, I gave the Excellent Achievement Award for being a trooper. She comes in and crunches all the numbers at all times of the day, as soon as all the data comes in for our school scores and data in our department, she's like a one-man-machine woman. And she's pretty amazing, so I want to thank her for all she has done. I made a little jog out to Cocoa, well, twice, once to see how the EEGs were going. I wanted to see how many students were going there and what they were doing and it seems like they had a steady stream on that. People were signing up and I really liked how they had the setup and it was very efficient and I was very impressed with that. And last but not least, the ribbon cutting at Cocoa High School for their newly-designed CTE Construction Lab. Very impressive, I'm very excited, it's a beautiful building. I think the teachers who are going to be teaching in that one, it's a great building. I think you probably already know that if you get your classrooms all set up. So I'm excited for that. We have construction coming in, they'll be able to do construction, they have automotive, we have culinary. What am I forgetting?
It's indoors too.
Health Sciences. Yeah, it is, it's beautiful, it's a beautiful, of course it's indoors.
Well, she, they wanted indoors, it's a good spot.
Yeah, but he still has to go outside, you have to go outside. But anyhow, it's a great building, it's beautiful and thanks to everybody who supported that and thanks to our legislature who helped with that with funding, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you. I'd like to highlight a few things. I had the opportunity to attend the SRO Back to School Planning Meeting and I, we had approximately 70 SROs in the room, led by Major Walters, our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Novelli. And certainly the presence in the room was quite awesome, just having that many law enforcement officers in one room. But the passion and the commitment that they had to bring to our schools was so evident in the collaboration that was going on, the discussion that was going on with the leadership and just a commitment to keep our students and our staff safe in our schools. Really provided the assurance that we were ready to start the year. I want to highlight four SROs, officers that were recognized through the Melbourne Regional Chamber in their Valor Award Ceremony. It's actually coming up in a couple of weeks, but I want to do the shout out for four SROs. Elementary SRO is Sheriff's Corporal Breann Lewis from Capeview Elementary. All right, go Capeview. Middle School SRO of the Year, Titusville Officer Lamont Jackson from Jackson Middle School. All right. High School SRO of the Year, Sheriff's Corporal John Reddy, Viera High School, right here. And our Sheriff's Corp, School District SRO of the Year is our Sheriff's Corporal Kurt Gewinniger and I definitely, I know you'd know his canine Sonic. So normally he's here, but I don't see him tonight, but congratulations to Corporal Gewinniger I had the real privilege to attend a VOTEC Rehab Internship Construction Graduation last week, one evening last week with the HBCA, the Home Builders and Contractors Association. Twenty-seven of our students participated in a five-week internship over the summer through, across various construction-oriented businesses and HBCA recognized them, both the contractors and the students. That only represents 27 of the over 100 students that we had in internships across our district this year through VOTEC Rehab. And I know I'm stealing Mr. Susan's thunder because he always talks about it, but the state funds that internship program and we just bring together our kids with business opportunities and Mr. Susan's been a champion for that and it was just a thrill to celebrate our kids and the opportunity they had this summer and looking forward to even more going forward. I have to share, I attended Cocoa's Chorus Fundraising Concert on Saturday afternoon. If you haven't been to the Cocoa Village Playhouse, it is a beautiful venue, number one, but I can't imagine it ever sounded so glorious than that afternoon. The 30-some students who performed under the awesome leadership of Dr. Martinez, my wife and I's heart was, hearts were completely filled and it carried us even through today. So to have them back tonight is just an absolute blessing. If you have the opportunity to see them perform, I highly, highly recommend it. They're absolutely phenomenal and they have, I know, all of our support as they go on, go up to New York in a couple of months. Want to do a shout out to Park Avenue Baptist Church in Titusville. They hosted a luncheon appreciation and prayed for our administrators on Sunday. They do that annually and I had the privilege to be with them this time, I received an invitation. And yesterday, started my day on a bus and ended at Croton Elementary School. What a, our community came together, our teachers were there and did a clapping, it was my first experience with a clapping and everyone was cheering our students coming in off the buses and then from the car loop and walkers and so on. It was just a phenomenal experience. I had the, then I went on to Anderson, Challenger Seven, Palm Bay High, Lockmar and Central Middle School. And I would echo Ms. Campbell's compliments and just appreciation to our staff, both at the Meadow Lanes as well as Central and I know we had some glitches in other places, particularly with the heat, just absolute champions and working with our kids through that, through that situation and to our team to get the air conditioning. But just a phenomenal start to the school year. Truly, our teachers don't just open the doors of their classrooms, they open their hearts to welcome our students back. So I thank you for welcoming our students to such a, to your classrooms and sharing your love and your expertise with them and just a great start to the school year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. We have a marathon up here today. I just have a couple left. I'm going to thank Haircuttery. Two thousand five hundred haircuts they gave away at the Back to School Event that Brevard School Foundation put on. So, I think that's a great community partner. Two thousand five hundred haircuts are not cheap and some of those kids, that'll be the only haircut that, you know, they'll be able to have besides maybe their mom chipping at it for the year. So we're very grateful to the Haircuttery. Representatives Saroy and Senator Wright are putting together a Brevard Day at the Capitol on January 21st. So, School Board, mark your calendar. Other communities around the state do this and they want education to play a role. Ms. Belford, you mentioned that Lockheed Martin had us in the top five. Well, they called together a bunch of community leaders, presidents of the local chambers and different areas and they picked their top five things that they want to hit the whole Capitol with that day and education was number two after the lagoon. So, education and workforce. So that's wonderful to hear. As that, as that event develops, it's going to be open to the public. They want everybody from Brevard that wants to drive up that day to participate, to showcase what Brevard has to offer. And I want to thank the Children's Hunger Project. Aside from providing over 2,000 of our students meals over the weekend all school year, they hosted an off-site for the board where we were able to do some professional development for ourselves and training. So, they host us at free of cost and we appreciate their kindness and what they do for our students and for us. And I would just like to reiterate, the Professional Development Day, I was able to stop by the Eastern Florida State College where our social workers and guidance counselors were and the guest speaker was phenomenal. He did a great job. So thank you, Ms. Moore, for your team that helped put all that together. The whole day was, I just, so many offerings, you know, to walk around Viera and to feel the spirit that was there and the different teachers that had come back from the different schools and their shirts from their schools and the excitement they were to get back together was, was a great way to lead into the first day of school, which is just an exciting day in itself, you know, to pull out of my neighborhood and see the buses starting to come down the road and just the excitement. Every teacher you talked to couldn't sleep well the night before, my own son and kids couldn't sleep well the night before, our school board members didn't sleep well the night before. I know Ms. Han probably stayed up all night. So it's, it's an exciting time. So congratulations to everyone for a successful first day. Let's get on with our meeting. Let's move on to the adoption of the agenda, Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Duskovich and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 15 consent items, six action items and one information item. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F-11 on specialist safety and security support personnel, F-16 on revised 2019-20 MOU district security and SROs with Brevard County Sheriff, G-25 on purchasing solicitations and H-31 on Florida Department of Education District Instructional Leadership and Faculty Development Grant received revisions. Item F-9 on student expulsions is in addition.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. McDougal. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskovich, there are six individuals on the agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. I'll second again.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. McDougal. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
At this time, I'd like to welcome and recognize those administrative staff persons that are here with us this evening. First, please join me in congratulating Mr. David Hamid on his reclassification from the position of teacher on assignment at Titusville High to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Titusville High School. Congratulations, sir.
Apparently I didn't plan my seat very well. If I put my back to, I apologize. I'll try to do like a rotary phone and go back and forth. Just have a couple of people I'd like to make sure I acknowledge for giving me the opportunity to be here, to accept this position. First off, Dr. Mullins and the School Board members, without your appointment, this obviously wouldn't be possible, so thank you all very much. I plan to do great things because you believe in me. Second of all, this would not happen without my mentor. My mentor is Ms. Tina Susan, principal at Jackson Middle School. Just a little brief story about her and I, she was the Assistant Principal at Tiesville High School when I was a teacher there and she basically pulled me aside one day and said, "What are you doing just stuck in the classroom? You need to get out there and lead, do more than just the classroom teaching." And she really, she sparked some interest in me, helped me get my master's going and really, really pushed me to be what I am today and she keeps pushing me, which is amazing because sometimes I want to push her back, but I realize that she's doing it for the benefit of myself and for the students and for the School Board in general. Next, I'd like to thank Molly Vega, she's in charge of the principals in the North End, so I'm going to be excited to work with her even more than I already have, as well as Dr. Sullivan and, there she is, and Dr. Novelli and even Sherry Bowman, who is retired. Dr. Novelli and Ms. Sherry Bowman came in when I was teacher on assignment my first year. I was struggling a little bit, I was trying to take on the world on my shoulders and they basically helped me realize that I am human, I'm not a superhero and really put me down the right path and to learn to ask for help and learn to delegate a little bit so I could be more successful for Tiesville High. Next, I'd like to thank my principal, Jennifer Gonzalez. She believed in me enough to obviously put a tick mark by my name to help me get this position. I'm glad she attended as well. Next is my family, I brought the peanut gallery as you heard. Most importantly, my parents, I'd like for them to raise their hands. Raymond and Susan Hammond, please raise your hand. Without them, obviously, this would not be possible. And just a, just a real quick story on that, Dr. Mullins, I hear through, see through Facebook that you're a big fan of Moonlight. They own Moonlight. Yeah, so, not sure if that had anything to do, yeah, not sure if that had anything to do with my appointment or not, but, you know. Finally, my siblings and just my immediate family, especially my wife and kids, I have two boys, for putting up with all my short temperance when I was trying to get my master's and be a teacher on assignment at the same time. I definitely dearly love them because they believed in me and still believe in me and put up with my you-know-what when I was going through this hard times. Finally, just a couple more people, Barbara Burgess and Todd Raspin, they are the APs at Tiesville High School. I worked underneath them as a teacher on assignment, they've taught me a lot of what I know now and they continue to teach me every day, as well as Principal Gonzalez. And it's just really, it's really great to work with such great people who will actually push you and in the right direction. So I really appreciate Barbara Burgess, Principal Gonzalez and Todd Raspin. And then finally, any colleague that has touched my heart as I've been teaching for nine years. It really does a lot when you go back and think what you've learned and what you've taught to other people. It just, it's really good. So I got a good feeling about this job and I just appreciate everybody. Thank you, everyone. You'll be seeing me in a couple more years, hopefully for another appointment as I move up. Thank you.
So I will first say, Mr. and Mrs. Hamid, thank you for your son, but also thank you for amazing burgers and milkshakes. Also want to congratulate Ms. Shannon Sayjack on her reclassification and transfer from the position... Did I get it right? I'm sorry. I knew that too. And I got it wrong. Let me start over. Congratulations go out to Mr. Shannon Sayjack on his reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Stone Magnet Middle School to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at the South Alternative Learning Center. Congratulations, Mr. Sayjack.
All right, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the board and Dr. Mullins, Ms. Moore and Ms. Bland for the opportunity to lead the Pathways at Pine Grove Program at the Alternative Learning Center South. I look forward to starting tomorrow and getting to work, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
We are now on to the public comment section of our meeting. Though School Board Policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have four public speakers signed up this evening. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statements should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement when the time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent and identify the topic that you will be discussing. Our first three speakers are Vanessa Skipper, Natalie Twine and Arthur Christensen. Ms. Skipper?
Good evening, Dr. Mullins, members of the board. There were 63 advertised-
Hold on, Ms. Skipper, it seems like your mic is not on. I can unmute you there. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. There were 63 advertised instructional openings as of 1:00 PM today. Most importantly, that's 27 secondary classrooms without a certified teacher or approximately 4,050 secondary students without a certified teacher. 24 elementary classrooms without a certified teacher or approximately 550 elementary students without a certified teacher. That's one adult ed teacher, three social workers, a literacy coach, four ESE support specialists, one elementary ESE guidance counselor, one elementary speech and language pathologist and one math and science- pathologist, and one math and science coach at Endeavor, by the way. And since most of these positions I just mentioned serve entire schools, the number affected by these openings is easily 10,000 or more. It is also important to note that 27 of those 63 positions are re-advertisements, so these are not positions that just opened. Equally important are the secondary classrooms, such as all the high school English classrooms at Cocoa High that have 28 to 30 students in them, standing room only, and in some rooms, not enough room to employ best learning strategies which allow students to move about the room safely. A teacher left, and they never replaced her. That position isn't even advertised. Those students who wowed you tonight with their performance deserve way more. None of the information that I just provided to you should surprise you. It's information I've provided before. We've brought solutions. We've told you where to find funds to keep teachers. We've asked you to go for millage, to close the wage compression gap for those who have been loyal to this district through pay freeze after pay freeze after pay freeze after pay freeze. And while we are optimistic moving forward, it is time to take us seriously when we bring solutions to the table. There are those of you up there who I've heard brag about having teachers over to the house who tell you that things are fine. Based on the results of the votes that you'll get later, I'm imagining all the teachers that actually voted yes could fit in your house. Here are just a few of the notes that were written on the ballots. So many amazing teachers have left BPS due to pay. We live here, and we deserve to be able to afford to live and work here. Single mom raising three children with minimal support, living paycheck to paycheck, working a professional career. I'm tired of using my own money for supplies. As we move forward into the 2019-2020 negotiations, I am optimistic that we can work together, especially since funds not previously recognized were found by an outside accounting firm secured by Dr. Mullins. That's one step. We know that there's probably more in the laps that we talked about. We're ready to move forward and work collaboratively with you all if you're ready to hear us and take us seriously. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Twine. I'm a proud parent of a recent graduate of Vieira High School and a current junior at Merritt Island High School. I'm a resident and registered voter of school District 4. I am not and have never been a teacher, but I am an ally. I feel compelled to speak today to ensure my voice, not only as a parent, but as a community member, is being heard. On June 24th, when our elected school board decided to vote against the teacher's salary plan as recommended by the state-appointed mediator, a decision that was said to be made in the best interest of our students, I was disgusted and ashamed. I felt it was such an injustice for our teachers, children, and our community. When I learned that during a recent third-party review, $1.5 million was somehow found, money that is now to be considered for teacher's salary, it became clear to me that your decisions have been ill-informed, unwise, and a detriment to our county's financial security. Brevard Public Schools is clearly having a problem with recruitment and retention of qualified certified teachers, considering that 70 teaching positions were still open at the start of the school year. Saying that substitutes will be used is not a valuable option, viable option. Last year, my son, for his honors chemistry class, had a substitute for three months. That's an honors chemistry class. My son learned during one of those classes how to do origami. Based on my son's and other students' experience, this substitute was ill-equipped for his assignment. Those students, along with the returning regular teacher, had to waste precious time catching up. My daughter recently learned that her favorite teacher, who taught honors history, left this year for another position in another county because he was being paid substantially more. We have a problem. Brevard Public Schools will soon begin to learn that they will not be able to maintain an A rating if teachers keep fleeing our county. If this becomes the case, I am sure decreasing property values will follow. The future of our public schools has reached a crisis stage. It is imperative that you, the school board, do not continue down this misguided path. I implore you to proactively, in this coming year, as you, I implore you to be proactive in this coming year, as hopefully you work with the teachers to address these issues. Let's put an end to having teachers beg for the pay that they well deserve. This is below the dignity of the institution of education. I would like to end with a quote from Michael Josephson. "We judge our character by our best intention and most notable acts, but we will be judged by our last worst act." Let's not let this year be your worst act. I, along with many of our communities, are allies of teachers, and will be sure to remember your acts as some of you face the 2020 elections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Arthur Christensen. I have a little bit different subject that you're well familiar with. Yesterday, I was disgusted and embarrassed when I walked outside my home and found Brevard Public School using our community and private property, which was probably illegal. It was total chaos, total lack of leadership from Stevenson School. And this was nothing more than letters I'd sent you earlier, a repeat of those letters. My family and I don't feel safe in our neighborhood when Stevenson School invades our community. My wife and I bought our home in 1983 at 2250 Windsor Drive, Merritt Island. That was a long time before Stevenson School, Merritt Island, was turned into a school of choice and a lawbreaker in a community, as I previously reported to you with pictures. Today, well, any day today, now, at darkness, sometimes 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whole Christmas vacation and summer vacations, Stevenson School turns on sharp, strong LED lights that are blinding to the neighbors. The lights are concentrated on a southwest corner of Stevenson School aimed at the public street intersection. These blinding lights shine on private homes. These blinding lights shine on residents when they step outside. These blinding lights shine into the drive when driving north on Windsor Drive towards Stevenson School. I have sent Brevard Public School Board members and others for years many letters pointing out law violations, photographs of public school law violations. Yet it continues to this day and makes the school board look like they're accomplice. I hereby request Brevard School Board provides a leadership to assure public schools, especially Stevenson School, operate within the Constitution, federal laws, Florida state laws. And I wrote you about that, too, and sent you a copy of the references.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Our final speaker this evening is Kathy West.
How y'all doing today? My name is Kathy West. I'm a substitute teacher. I'm here to ask for subpay to be raised. We're still in a subcrisis. Subs are not getting paid a livable wage. We haven't gotten a raise in 10 years. And when you don't make a livable wage, it causes a problem. I had to ride the bus down here because I can't afford a newer car. And other counties are getting bonuses of $200, $300 after 90 days of working as a I tell you, the only thing I can tell you right here is these numbers don't lie. I had to ride the bus here. It's economical for me to ride the bus because I can spend a dollar each way. Those numbers don't lie. They say pictures are worth 1,000 words. Here's 2,000 words. That concludes my announcement.
Does any board member have any comments?
Just as a quick response to Ms. West, we received an email. Did you send us an email about teacher pay or substitute pay recently? Like yesterday or the day before?
No.
No? Okay. So we did receive an email from another substitute that was inquiring about substitute pay. So know that you're not alone. Know that we are hearing you. And that is one of the things that the board has asked to be looked at going forward as well, because we know that you guys have, it's been a while. So you are incredibly valued to us. We appreciate you, and we're going to have some discussion about what we can do. Okay? And the invitation still stands for you to give me a call if you want to talk in more depth about more ideas.
Any other board member?
Ms. Duskevich?
Yes, sir.
If I may, just in response to Ms. Skipper's comments, I do want to provide one clarification and also to echo some of the comments that Ms. Skipper and the conversations I've had with Mr. Calucci most recently. The accounting for the funds that Ms. Skipper alluded to were identified by staff internally and verified by the third party. So just to correct that misunderstanding. But I also want to echo the conversations we've had most recently around coming together, collaborating, and working together to continue to tackle the challenge of compensation for teachers and all of our employees. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And that reminds me, I can't remember, somebody mentioned the $1.5 million being found. And I just want to clarify that it's not that it was lost. It was just identified as non-recurring, and it's now been identified as recurring, which means it can be used for raises. So I just think it's, we all need to be on the same page because this is a lot of information at one time as we're moving forward. So, thank you. That moves us on to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 15 items under this category.
Does any board member wish to pull any of these items?
Can I make a comment on one of them? Just one? I don't want to pull it. I just want to make us think.
Sure.
All right? Okay. I just want to say to the property disposal, or really to our staff, I was looking at one, and there's something that we're, I think it was a kitchen item that we have had since 1967.
I saw that.
And I was absolutely amazed that we make things last that long. So thank you, whoever is responsible, for keeping that going. It's pretty amazing. I think it was supposed to last like seven years. So, nice work.
It is, now that you brought that topic up, I went through that with a fine-toothed comb for more than usual, for some reason, because the years, I think it was at the Galley High School that they were clearing out, maybe, and disposing of. And there were quite a few things from the '60s that were being disposed of. So, yeah, that's a good comment, Cheryl. Okay. What are the wishes of the board on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Ms. Belfort, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? This would have been a good time for your discussions, Cheryl. I probably should have, I should have directed you, I'm sorry. Motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskevich, there are a total of six action items for us to go through. Item G-25 is on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I do want, a motion passes 5-0. I do want to make a comment about that, about one of the contracts that we just voted on in there for the RFP. We, as a board, have been working hard on security, as most of you know that have been in any of our schools recently. And we have taken a step here under this vote to have each school evaluated in detail for security for, it's going to take months for them to do that, but it's going to also give us some good direction on how to secure our schools. So just wanted to point that out for those that are watching things that we're moving in on security. Dr. Mullins, the next item?
Item G-26 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Has somebody not voted, Pam?
I clicked it.
Is that you, Mr. Susan?
I clicked it.
It was you, Mr. Susan. Motion passes 5-0.
I clicked it. It was AT&amp;T.
And Dr. Mullins?
Item G-27 is board action on the Brevard Federation of Teachers 2018-19 Collective Bargaining Agreement vote held on August 9, 2019.
Okay. On August 9, 2019, the Brevard Federation of Teachers concluded their voting process for the 2018-2019 Collective Bargaining Agreement. All representative instructional staff were provided an opportunity to vote on the implementation of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement encompassing the 2018-2019 academic year. Mr. Calucci, do you want to come forward and present the results of that vote for us,
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Last week, members of the BFT bargaining unit voted on the 2018-19 contract. Voting took place at 92 locations. Tonight, I'm here to present the results. 4,048 votes were cast, representing 84% of eligible voters. This was the highest percentage voter participation we have on record. There were 3,886 no votes, 160 yes votes with two ballots that were voided. 96% of the BFT bargaining unit rejected this contract. We all know that this vote was largely symbolic and that it will actually delay the adoption of beneficial contract language. So it's important to understand what this no vote means. To be clear, our teachers voted no on this contract because it was a vote of yes for their dignity. Our teachers' vote is a clear message to this board, the superintendent, and the community that we know we are an asset to Brevard County and time and time again are the reason why this district consistently outperforms the state on nearly every single metric of student achievement. Our teachers, the third-most experienced workforce in the state, rank 30th in average teacher pay, a state that ranks 46th in the nation in average teacher pay. Despite their experience, our teachers are trailing the state average by $2,170. It is a fact that teachers are leaving because of the low pay. There were approximately 60 vacancies at the start of the school year. This no says that if you're going to retain us here in Brevard, we demand that you honor and respect us. Our no means we expect that the board is prepared and willing to negotiate. When we bring our proposals to the table, they should be given serious consideration, not just a no after a month of waiting for an answer. Our no means that we will no longer tolerate the indignity of watching teachers in surrounding counties receiving larger raises than us year after year after year. And our no means when a neutral party says we deserve the raise, the district can afford it, and it is in the best interest of students to do so, four of you voting against that decision is in no way acceptable. When our whole community watched how your CFO was unprepared with the necessary information to counter our- to counter our argument at the hearing and four of you still voted no, that's in no way acceptable. And we are glad that Dr. Mullins is trying to right the wrong with the attrition money. But if we were treated with dignity to begin with, it would have never got to this point. When we told you you were over budgeting teaching units, we got pushback, only to be right in the end. When we told you our pay was falling behind comparable districts, we got pushback, only to be right in the end. When we told you you were saving on attrition and you had too much money in your fund balance, we got pushback, only to be right in the end. With all this said, I am hopeful that this board and superintendent can earn back our trust. I'm cautiously optimistic that relations are heading in this direction with your new HR team in place and with lines of communication open as they have been recently. But as of now, this relationship is tenuous. And we must see that you're ready to take us seriously on a consistent basis. We cannot take a step forward and two back. One of the first tests will be providing our teachers a fair raise for the 1920 school year by the end of the fall. Furthermore, we are supportive of the board's plan to look for a long-term solution for funding teachers' pay in this district, even if the state legislature fails to adequately fund public education, which it is. It must be noted that Florida is 43rd in the nation in per capita student funding. But as we look at that long-term plan, you need to remember that water at a distance does not put out a fire at hand. Now, while I can't guarantee what this board will do or what the state legislature will do, I can guarantee this. Our teachers will continue to vote against indignity each and every time it occurs and we will put an enormous amount of pressure on anyone who promotes anything but honor and respect for public education and the noble educators of Brevard County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. As verified by the BFT leadership, the majority of instructional staff have voted against the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement. Section 447.403-4E Florida statutes, which governs the resolution of impasse, provides in part as follows. If such agreement is not ratified by all parties pursuant to the provisions of Statute 447.309, the legislative body's action taken pursuant to the provisions of paragraph D shall take effect as of the date of such legislative body's action for the remainder of the first fiscal year, which was the subject of negotiations. However, the legislative body's action shall not take effect with respect to those disputed impasse issues which establish the language of contractual provisions, which could have no effect in the absence of a ratified agreement, including but not limited to preambles, recognition clauses, and duration clauses. In accordance with Section 447.403 Florida statutes, the board is charged with the right to impose those items approved at the impasse hearing of June 24, 2019. The items to impose are as follows. Number one, recurring salary increases of $1,100 for those teachers rated highly effective on their 2017-2018 evaluation, and $825 for those teachers rated effective. This raise is based on the results of the teachers' evaluations for the 2018-17-2018 school year that were completed in the fall of 2018. Number two, a non-recurring one-time bonus for all teachers of $650. Number three, a non-recurring one-time bonus of $500 for first-year teachers who have agreed to return to teach for the 2019-2020 school year. And number four, a supplement for exceptional student education teachers of $835. $835 above the current ESE supplement of $165. I would like to remind the board as well, as BFT, that under Section 447.403, the board cannot impose the TA language because it was not included as part of the impasse process. Accordingly, BPS and BFT will have to review those TAs as part of the 2019-2020 negotiation process. Pursuant to Section 447.403-4E Florida statutes, no vote is to be taken since the board already voted, no vote is to be taken since the board already voted and resolved the disputed impasse issue during the June 24, 2019 impasse hearing. As has been advised by our labor council, there is no prohibition in the statute to making the payments apply retroactively. I want to clarify that, to make sure that's not being heard wrong. We are retro, there's no, there's nothing stopping us from retroactively applying it and we are retroactively applying it. I want to make sure that wasn't misheard. I think that now concludes that portion of our meeting. Dr. Mullins.
The next three items are board policy revisions. These policies came before the board during a rural development workshop on July 9, 2019, providing the community its first opportunity for public input. Tonight, the board will hold a public hearing to provide a second occasion for community participation before taking action.
I call the public hearing to order. Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions to Policy 7540.01, Technology Privacy? Is there anyone here who's come to address the revisions to Policy 7540.01, Technology Privacy? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Now we are at 7540.08. Is there anyone who has come to address policy revisions to Policy 7540.08, Mobile Computing Device Assignment and Use? Is there anyone who has come to address policy revisions to Policy 7540.08, Mobile Computing Device Assignment and Use? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. The last policy revision this evening is School Board Policy 7540.11. Is there anyone who has come to address policy revisions to Policy 7540.11, Electronic Data Confidentiality? Is there anyone who's come to address policy revisions to Policy 7540.11, Electronic Data Confidentiality? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board to review and will be brought back for action at a later meeting. No action will be taken on these issues tonight. Dr. Mullins?
There is one item under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss this item? Okay, we will now move on to discussion points for the evening. We only have one discussion point, and that is our suicide prevention funds. So a little background for those that might be listening. The 20, in 2016, I believe, we had allocated $1,000 per high school for, to be used specifically for suicide prevention to bring in, we were kinda at a, I'm not really sure how to say it. We were at a really bad place here as a district with the number of students we had lost in a very close time period. And so we worked in the budget that year to allocate $1,000 per school to bring in a speaker or someone to work directly with students to have an immediate impact. We had a lot of other programs we were bringing in to help the school long-term and different processes. And we were working on getting more social workers at the time, but we needed just a quick infusion, which was fairly successful. I feel like they had a really great impact, those that came in. That being said, that is recurring dollars. It only covers our high schools. I know even in 2017, Ms. Belford recommended that we added our middle schools because we were having some concerns in that age range also, unfortunately. So now we are at a point where we're in year three of these funds, I believe. Ms. Moore, if you want to come up. We've had some schools request to use those funds a little differently. I think staff would like us to put some flexibility in those funds, but since we gave very specific direction the first year how to use those, they're not comfortable giving that permission without a little board discussion. I don't think we necessarily have to take any votes tonight, but if we can just let Ms. Moore know how we'd like these funds spent in the future, especially because we have two new board members that might have some input too. So I turn it over to you all.
Okay. Good evening. First off, I want to thank you guys. You guys approved our mental health allocation plan tonight and it's a big deal and I really appreciate it. Thank you. This is actually the second year. They were inadvertently not funded last year. But we had a lot of initiatives going on last year that helped support that. We were doing a lot of youth mental health first aid training. We were really rolling out sources of strength in all the high schools and actually a couple of the middle schools. So we had a lot of initiatives. The funds this year, the $16,000, it's our recommendation that we be allowed to expand and offer some of those funds to the middle schools as well, equitably distribute that. We'd also like to work with the schools to put a plan together that fits their needs now in terms of suicide prevention. Some of the schools have really great sources of strengths programs. Their request three years ago was to use some of those funds for sources of strength. Some of them have some different anti, some suicide prevention activities that they would like to see funded. We want to support schools where they're at and let them work with some of our resource teachers in order to put together a plan to use those funds where they're at in their plan for suicide prevention.
I'll just jump in here first, since this was one of my original requests. I'm okay with the funds being more flexible. Obviously, you know, the schools know best and I think the principal probably knows best how they can be used in their school. I would hope, ask, request that once, once you're at a place where you feel like all schools have used it for the year or in some way, we could see just a little one-pager, really quick spreadsheet, something on how the schools have decided to use it and see how that money's impacting students directly. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Ms. Moore, I wanted to know, so I like that we're gonna meet the school where they are and what they would need. Are you or your department looking at, are these viable programs? Are they done with fidelity? I know that's one of my big things here. So I just want to make sure that we are, somebody's looking at that.
Yeah, and we looked at that three years ago when it fell under Student Services when Dr. Thede was in charge. There were some schools that were asking for things that weren't vetted and weren't research-backed. And she and her team had a great process in place to make sure that they weren't allocated and used that way. We're gonna, the same people are gonna be involved in the process, the same people are gonna be vetting the programs or the speakers as they, as the schools determine that they're need.
Thank you.
Mr. Susan?
No, I was just gonna say, the reason that we chose it at $1,000 was that was almost half of what it took to get to Walla, which was our original group to get in there, right? I mean, they were around two grand and the school kinda matched. Is that what I remember?
They actually reduced their, down to, because of what was allocated. So they reduced it down to 1,000, I believe, and made that happen. But they, schools had a choice and they, some had brought in, because I went and attended many, many of those and it wasn't always to write love on her arms.
Right. Chris Hallifield does an amazing job.
Right. And Westshore had brought somebody completely different in and it was, they were all a few thousand dollars and that thousand put sort of, I did just, you know, do the math with, we have 22 secondary schools, is that right?
Stephanie?
27.
28 divided by 16,000, you're now, you know, you're getting, you've watered down that money a ton for schools to be able to bring in.
And that's where my point was going is this. It's great to tell everybody that we're gonna reduce this so you have an opportunity for it, but we may be lowering it to the threshold where some schools are not able to capture enough dollars to get there. What I would entertain, and I keep bringing it up and every time we have an opportunity to spend this money, but Space Coast Daily Park brings $22,000 a year. There's some other outside revenue sources, maybe sponsorship, something that we can get them to. But instead of reducing it down, I would almost hold it at 1,000 for high schools and look at opportunity revenues, opportunities from outside sources, not our recurring dollars that we have from the state or anything like that, but to match it. And the main reason is, is that I'm afraid that if we lower the amount, and I talked to some of my schools and this was their concern, I mean, this just came from them, not me, is that once it drops below that, it's difficult for them to achieve the goal that they have and possibly not be able to fundraise for it. Now, maybe I'm outside my rocker, but that was a concern that came from my schools.
Dr. Sullivan, which, sorry that you're all the way back there and shouting from the back of the room, but 28 schools, what does that include other than our traditional secondary?
Eleven is middle only. There's five combo schools. Eleven high school only, and then Brevard Virtual School.
Brevard Virtual, okay. That comes down to like 570-ish dollars, which doesn't go very far, right?
What do we do for virtual school?
Yeah, what would virtual school?
Can I speak on that?
She has a lot of students that have a diet in different areas.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
And I can, I can address later some of the other issues that she has dealt with in this area.
So I have a quick question about, I'm pretty sure there are grants out there. Anybody looking at grants? I mean, this is a big deal across our country and for this age group right now. Grant opportunities for us?
Right off the top of my head, I don't know of any that are currently out there. We can certainly work with Robin Ward and see if she knows of any that we can apply for. Our sources of strength training was done on a grant. We're still working through that grant. Some of our youth mental health first aid was also on a grant. So we have accessed grants in the past for suicide prevention activities.
Ms. Belford?
Well, I would all, I'm sorry.
Oh, we're out of control here.
I would just add that I think our schools, when we, when they did it, also worked with their business partners at their school, PTO, PTA. That was a great initiative and commitment as a school to really dive into that. So I think those were opportunities as well.
So, Ms. Moore, what do you guys think about UEE collectively? Because I don't like watering this down to 570. It's just, it's, and Cheryl, I understand grants and such, but we get a lot of grants for all kinds of things in mental health. This was just very specific, niched funds. What about turning it more into a grant style for us? Because I think you said that first year, a couple of schools didn't use their funds. So what if it's a matching or first come, first served with the max 1,000? Because one year, one school might be more motivated to do something bigger or smaller. I'm just trying to get creative in how to make 16,000 grow into 28,000. Ms. Belford?
Ms. Moore, do we have sources of strength in every high school?
We will by the end of this year. I think we have two schools left that we have to work with. And I think there's a couple that we need to go back and re-invite.
Okay. And how about middle schools?
Not at every middle school. In fact, it's, there's very few middle schools that have sources of strength.
Just my Madison and Jackson?
Yep. There might be a couple more, but those are the two that are actively involved in sources of strength.
And how many of our high schools have gone through the youth mental health counseling? Significant numbers of 13.
Youth mental health first aid. I'd have to get those numbers to you. We know that we have trained people from every single school. We have trained over 2,000 people in our district. We have training set up for many schools to go school-wide. High schools are harder to train because we can only train in groups of 30 and we have to have two trainers in each room. So in order to train a full high school, you would need eight trainers, minimum. So they're being set up and I know a couple have already happened, but I can't tell you that right off the top of my head, but I can get you that information.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if perhaps, since we have sources of strength programs running in the secondary schools, would these dollars be better, I shouldn't say secondary, running in the high schools, would these dollars be better spent supporting our middle schools who are?
What's the cost to get a sources of strength up and running, do you know?
There's no associated cost, like you have to join or you have to, but when you go through the training and you bring your team together, they're, part of it is to develop initiatives to- develop initiatives to promote sources of strength and to get the rest of the school involved in what that is. So there's always going to be some associated costs. The schools weren't asking for very much three years ago when they asked for that money. They just wanted some kind of a budget in order to do the activities that would reach out to all the students across the school.
Do our combo schools have sources of strength? The five combos?
Yes.
So we're just looking at our 11 middle schools, and you say two of those already have?
Two of those that I know of, and I know there's a couple of more that have had the training. I will tell you that when I talk to Janine Knight, who's one of our sources of strength trainers, she's hesitant about wanting to push it out to all of the middle schools just because of the limited number of years in the middle schools. The point is to really have a program up and running that's sustainable, and kids come and go out of middle school so fast that it's hard to get some continuity there.
Can I say something?
Of course you can, Mr. Susan.
Sorry. I go to dinners, and they raise $300,000 in one night. They have title sponsors for $25,000 tables. They have-- it's crazy, right? This is the strongest point in our school system right now. If you say anything, it's mental health, right? Mental health, security, career, and technical. Why is it so difficult for us to just say, "We need $12,000 to the Brevard Schools Foundation. Go ask our partners if they'll raise it?" Because I understand that we want to reduce, I understand that we want to target, but the problem is, is that our-- one of our issues was, is that a lot of where we were targeting was based upon the need that was happening at the time, was all in the high schools, and I get nervous about dropping it down. One of the things that I would like to do is just ask Brevard Schools Foundation. I know that people that want to go-- would love to get behind initiating for $12,000 an entire-- I mean, I just got Chrysler Auto up in Titusville just donated a vehicle today to a student up there, right? So there are people that will donate to this. I think we should check that avenue. I mean, that, to me, would be the easiest beginning of how to do that. I mean, I think the money's out there.
Mr. Susan, I don't know that that's a-- I love the idea, but I think we often are saying, "Let's just get someone to donate it," and it doesn't always happen, it doesn't always pan out. I think we need a plan for this money right at this minute, and we can-- obviously, if we can get it, we can add to it, and it can grow. No one's going to turn it down, but we need a plan right now for the 16,000.
So we have $21,000 that comes from Space Coast Daily Park. Let's just take 11 of it and do it tonight.
Where's those funds going now, anybody?
In the operating fund, general.
They're just in the general fund?
They're allocated in our general fund budget.
But everything falls to the bottom line. We can take a stand, keep talking about this. Sorry.
Oh, you could've.
Sorry, Ms. Zirker, I know we didn't prep you, but you don't--
The Space Coast Daily funds have been going into the general fund. What's left out of the cost of any additional usage there? I don't know specifically. For example, if someone rents the auditorium at Vieira, there is supply cost and labor. I don't know the specifics of what, if anything, there is that facilities has to do to that land after they leave. Otherwise, it's become part of our general fund budget.
Okay, so it's not allocated? That income isn't directly allocated to something else? But there could be some facility turnover, maintenance cost or something there?
There could be some portion of it that is going to cover some costs associated with that land, but other than that, it just goes into the general fund.
Can I speak to that? They spent $170,000 to bring in rock to raise the elevation up. There will be no-- they have improved it, if anything, past what we would have paid to build something there.
No, I'm talking about just right after the use, if they have to go in and do anything to clean it up. I don't have the specifics tonight. I'd be happy to get the facilities use agreement tomorrow and send it to you. I don't know if anything's coming out or not.
Okay, I think we-- this is getting-- we're getting down some rabbit holes here. So let's-- thank you, both of you ladies. We're gonna give some kind of direction here and maybe continue this discussion at a-- I hate to do a whole workshop on this. This isn't that--
I don't think we need to.
Ms. Belford?
Since we already have the $1,000, I agree with you to water it down to 570 or whatever the figure would be. I think we're losing benefit there enormously. So if it pleases the rest of the board, my recommendation would be that as far as direction tonight, so we can get those dollars in the hands of our schools to be able to create impact, I would suggest that we move forward with the $1,000 for the high schools. And then if we can identify additional dollars to be utilized for the middle schools, I would simply ask that perhaps Ms. Moore could gather some feedback as to would $1,000 at a middle school be beneficial on that topic? I mean, obviously, the schools can always use the money, but is-- are there truly beneficial uses of those dollars at the middle school level for us to continue going forward, or do we need to look at perhaps a different dollar amount? Is there a greater need at the middle school level? That's your area of expertise, if you don't mind, Ms. Moore.
I like that, and I think, do we all agree, a little flexibility is-- it doesn't have to be specific? And then, Mr. Susan, we can work, we can ask Ms. Zirker to work with Ms. Han and find out if facilities is spending any money on the Space Coast Daily property. And meanwhile, we also-- Mr. Susan can talk to Brevard Schools Foundation if you want to take that one on.
You know what? I'll talk to them.
You'll talk to them?
Yeah.
Okay. Or if you can think of another fundraising idea. It's $12,000 we would need to be able to have everyone get all secondary plus Brevard Virtual receive $1,000 in this area. Everybody good with that?
First, we have to get $12,000 to Koka High School so they can go to Carnegie-Holmes.
First, we need $12,000.
Just saying.
Can we also set-- here's the reason is this, is that we have many funding opportunities that we have within our school district, but many people don't go out of their way to create those funding opportunities because the money always just falls to the bottom line. So can we, as a board-- because I keep-- every time we figure something out, I'm just screaming, "Use it for this," right? And obviously, I've probably put down $150,000 to be spent on $22,000, right? Can we, as a board, just allocate that money to something? Because we talked about playgrounds for low-income schools. We talked about-- now we're talking about this. I mean, it just falls to the bottom line, and if we use it for this, it's an un-- it's not part of our budget, it just comes in, and I think that we should use it for something special. That's all.
I-- Ms. Campbell?
Yes. I beg to differ, because if it's going into the general fund, then it is funding salaries and benefits and our school expenses and paying for subs and all that. And if we decide to take $12,000 or however much it is, whatever the money that's coming from the land, then we're going to have to find-- Dr. Mullins is going to have to find that money out of the budget to cut because we just changed the allocation of that money. Am I correct? I mean, if it's in the general fund, it's being used. It's not just sitting there waiting for us to come up with something to spend it on, it's being spent.
Can I respond?
I think we need to wrap this up because we're going to get into the same circle of argument we've been in. I know, Mr. Susan, where you're going with this, that it's falling to the bottom line, and now we're back into the fund balance argument, which we've been having for months. So you can absolutely respond, Mr. Susan, but I'm hoping that we can not stay on this hamster wheel all evening.
Nope, let's go.
Did I capture you correctly, saying it's falling to the fund balance?
It's not budgeted at the beginning of the year. It's a variable that goes between $20,000 and $30,000. We get more, we get less.
We don't have a set amount with them?
No. It's $1,000 a day for every day that he opens up for the fair or for a concert. So it's not allocated, but if we want to go down and you want me to go line by line and find all the money that we may have that's fallen to the bottom line and prove that we have $12,000 for mental health allocations inside of our schools, then do it. Let's go.
I think we would just like to see the contract. If someone can send that to us, Ms. Zirker, in the next couple of days, that would be helpful. Mr. Susan? Okay. And I think that unless we have anything else we would like to discuss, we're going to adjourn for the evening. Thank you.